Like to move superintendent's report right after public comment to item two. I will also be amending to add on item six to add a C student representative. As well as adding in number eleven, which is an executive session. One under one VSA three thirteen three, the appointment or employment or evaluation of a public officer or employee, provided that the public body shall make a final decision to hire or or to appoint a public officer or employee in an open meeting and shall explain the reasons for its final decisions during the open meeting.
Grant, we want to introduce before we lose Holly. Finance being biomass controls, if we could put that into the superintendent's report so she can she can speak to that if you have any questions before she has to leave.
Okay. So we will start off with public comments.
There is no public electronically here. Well, we have we have cat TV, Richard. That's it.
Okay. So with no public comments, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. We go first with our Holly Anderson, Director of Niche Operations.
It was incorrect.
There's other terms in there too. She's going to give you a report on, and she's been going, if you're on another board, you might have seen. She's giving reports at. It's not, I'm trying to get you.
The elementary district in Arlington.
What was the screen? You should be able to hear your screen now. All right.
So I just put together a couple of quick slides. To kind of go over. That's your whole project. So we've been working on a design for HVAC pieces of equipment and systems for all the schools in the SVSU. And we have a big pot of money and out of that big pot of money, yes, that Mount Anthony Union has five million, six hundred and change ish that we have to do to. I am so sorry, I'm usually better at this. So for the MAU, for just the high school. I should add that. So the federal fund scope.
I'm gonna take the blame for that because maybe half an hour ago I went in and made her change some of these slides, so she may be a little.
No, it's all good. It's all good. So through the American Recovery Act and our bestener the Mount Anthony Union District got a pot of money. For the high school, this is for the high school. This doesn't include the middle school because it's a separate. It's a separate project in and of itself, but the the idea behind it is to go into the buildings and make sure A they're ventilated properly, B they're within the temperature range set by the Agency of Education, and that the incoming air is dehumidified, so it's a dry. So the middle school already has the design complete. The intent for the middle school is to add air conditioning. The rooftop unit and all the duct work, when the building was built, was all contemplated air conditioning. They just never installed the chiller. So there's two things we're doing at the middle school. Adding air conditioning and we're also upgrading the building management system, which is generally not specifically original to the building. So out of a nineteen year old building, we're running it off of software that and hardware that's nineteen years old. So once both of those things get upgraded, we'll be able to improve the air quality and the comfort of the occupants. So this is the high school. We've received quotes only, so we're in we're in design development for the MAU high school campus. And again, we want to meet those three criteria set by the agency that we want to hit ventilation standards, hit the temperature range and dehumidify. So the, this is construction only. I pulled ten from that twenty-two million. That is hard costs and soft costs, just the construction out. And this is only for ventilation. This isn't for ADA or any other scope of work. So East Campus, one part three, Student Center, five hundred thousand. And so the estimated costs for to meet the Agency of Ed air requirements you can see is not cheap. So my ask of you all is, we have a little over five point five million dollars. Where should we continue to design and focus on with the funds we have? We only have about a third of the money we need for the project.
It is so rare, I mean, you know.
Yeah.
That we aren't going to be able to accomplish everything they want. Arlington just experienced the same thing. They had to scale back. There. About a third, yeah.
Yeah, so we got the SVSU in total got twelve point four million. And so we parsed out to each district and then to each building based on much what each building needed to meet the Agency of requirements.
I mean, Holly, you know these buildings better than we do, hopefully so far, you know, it's like. Do you, are you ready to make a recommendation to the board on what should be their, you know, one, two, three priorities to spend the five point three million?
Yeah, so I I would look to the group and I'd also look to the principals and say, hey, Chris, you're pretty well underway. Your project is designed. I need to find a contractor, which is has been its own challenge because it's federal funds, you have to go through federal procurement and state procurement.
So that's gonna happen. How much is that? Of the five point three million, how much would that take the middle school project?
Oh, that's separate. Yeah, so I have two point five million for the middle school project.
Oh, so this five million is just for the high school.
This is only for money.
Okay, so. Let me just clarify to make sure I understand it. So the middle school will be taken care of for all ADA federal standards with with.
For HVAC.
For HVAC.
It's just for HVAC.
So not ADA.
Not ADA.
Okay.
Nothing else. This is just.
That's assuming we come in, you know, with the estimate.
Luckily, the estimate is contemplates today's market and not pre-COVID, so it in their professional estimators.
They have a degree of confidence.
Yeah. That we're close.
What is the timeline that we have to use the?
So we have to use all of the funds by September thirtieth of thirty of two thousand twenty-four.
So we have two summers.
Yeah.
So will the work begin this summer?
That is a very good question. So I am doing my best. The people at the state that oversee this money, see my name pop up on calls and I would go, God, it's her again. Because we we need to have ventilation or we need to have air conditioning in the middle school, as you know.
We are losing the window and it's because of state approval not coming through.
Right.
And we haven't even gone out to bid for.
We have gone out to bid for the middle.
Middle school, but none of these other projects.
So not in this district. So Arlington is already contracted. Yes, the elementary district is in different phases, different buildings. So this, this. Yeah, this amount of money is just for the high school.
I, sitting here, I would have to ask, like you, like you suggested, those who are in the building every day to to give us a perspective. Couple of things come to mind. Is it is it greatest need from a physical plant? Meaning these systems are so old, we have to replace them. Let's use that money for that. Is it greatest need by number of students and number of people impacted? Is it greatest need by we can get an entire building done or an entire wing done and that that might be the most efficient way to go. But I, it's, I, for sitting here, I don't know that I have any perspective on that. It would be looking to you to to see what's the what are the areas of greatest need that we can make this money go the furthest now? And then I would ask, I would say the second part of it is, what's the plan to get the remaining ten that's needed to finish it up?
Yeah, so from from my point of view and Tim, I don't live in a building every day. I would love nothing more than to replace all of the oil boilers in the existing mechanical room. They're old, they're inefficient. All of the piping goes to unit ventilators where the piping has gate valves that have broken off over time. It's just that the HVAC system in the original section of the building is original to the building and it's many decades old, right?
So is it HVAC or is it air quality?
Both.
Okay.
So it's, it would be boilers and air embers.
The, what they call what the eighty-six edition or something like that.
Yeah.
But that's the one that would have struggled with humidity control and had to pay for remediation for mold and ceiling replacement. So I would think something that eliminates our maintenance staff having to go around and individually empty dehumidifiers would be a priority.
Yeah, so replacing the boilers help efficiency and eventually save money too?
Absolutely. So that's why I broke the main project out because the thank you for that, Jim. The level zero is the basement, so that has the mechanical room. It has the humidification issues. And the the new wing, the eighty-four, eighty-five wing and Southwest Tech are both run off of the main mechanical room in that existing high school. So it's all one big.
So when those additions were built, they didn't get their own heating system, it was.
Yeah, they got like, they got heat exchangers.
Heat exchangers.
You know, things to make it work, but.
But the water that runs through it is still generated and the boilers are in the old building.
Sorry for.
No, I just wanted to kind of add on what Scott was saying. Are there any of these buildings that are going to be cycled out over the coming years? You know, that be consideration that maybe the oldest building is not going to survive the test of time and that might be a place to maybe my process of elimination start and say, hey, we'll take this out of the running, so to speak.
Right, and that's, that's what I've been working on for Jim is a master plan of each campus. And I have lots of thoughts and feelings about Mount Anthony. The Student Center in East Campus are poorly insulated, poorly air sealed, not energy efficient with their HVAC systems. So I, there's so much that needs to be addressed in these buildings and and when I look at the original building, it was, it was an award-winning architecture project in its day. Like it was beautiful once and I think it can be again. I'm a big fan of adaptive reuse and using what we have. Like we already have a sewer connection. We already have a water connection. We are, you know, we have some of the infrastructure in place. So I would love to do a phased cover renovation of the existing, but that is just, that is.
It's part of the master plan.
That is part of the master.
I just wondered for this particular piece, if there was one way to sort of eliminate a couple so that you could focus on what you may be building.
Yeah, I'm, so there's.
You may be looking at, you know, us coming back with this suggestion for bond issue going forward for what can't be accomplished by this.
Chair, did you have a question first?
The, your recommendation of replacing the boilers or whatever, is that a part, is that currently estimated into the fifteen million?
Yep, yep.
And and if so, what amount is that?
So that is in, it is in the main project line.
Right, yeah. But how much of the main project line?
I can tell you.
Is that level zero?
Is that the level zero?
Level zero. That's the whole basement.
Oh, okay. Will that have direct impact on the students' learning if we do, like, I mean, I know we're talking about the building and the efficiency and like, but it does that, it like we're putting, changing those boilers out, impact their living environment?
Yeah, but is that? So and this is, this type kind of kind of ties into the wood chip. The wood chip boiler software too is that the if you think of a car from nineteen sixty-eight and the car now, they're, they're vastly different, right? Like one has all the bells and whistles and so we're up, we're asking our building to operate. We're asking a nineteen sixty-eight car to operate like a two thousand twenty-three car. And it's just, the results are about to expect.
But I I agree with Stephanie. The priority should be, in my opinion, areas of impact where our students are. And that's can be, you know, to make the building more comfortable to be used as an education space and our and our staff too. No offense to the staff, Mr. Mr. Payne. I want Mr. Payne to be comfortable in his work too, but. You sit in my office, you can experience that. I have been in your office, yes.
Well, he sits right above the mechanical room and nothing's insulated and it's, it's, it's uncontrolled because the equipment we currently have in there is uncontrolled.
Environmental comfort, if I can use term.
Yeah, so basically we'd be replacing the the systems that would be working through our current venting systems. I'm assuming that that's not what we could afford to change now. But we feel that replacing, even without replacing the ventilation portion of it would increase the, by just replacing the actual machines would create a more comfortable environment even without the actual ventilation portion.
Yeah, yes.
Yes, I just add something as someone that's lived in the building for two years now. The heating would be great, even in the new middle, the newer basketball. We used to joke that the heat would always take a couple of days to catch up. So if you had a cold snap, it wouldn't instantly warm. And then when it got hot, we didn't have AC, but it would cool off for a few days. The high school has that, so identifying a boiler system is an excellent idea. The eighties wing, weirdly enough, is one of the more inefficient structures as far as it it tends to warm up pretty dramatically on the top floor. And the bottom floor tends to feel a little swampy when you have the changes in temperature and so so your newer part of the building is actually the one that could probably be addressed. I want to give you an example of something. A building's built nineteen, opens in nineteen sixty-eight. All the windows are single painted. So we've had a discussion with Holly and her staff about putting some tint on it in the cafeteria because you get so much reflection off the asphalt and it superheats the cafeteria. That's warm with three hundred kids in there, you watch. But the contractor said we couldn't do that because these installed seals that you put on to cut down light is too much heat exchange with single pane glass, which is the entire building. It will actually crack the windows and then you will chase yourself around the building. So a, 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 a new heating system is great, then you got the glass sitting in nineteen sixty-eight metal frames, which is acting as a heat exchanger. You know, so it's. It's one of these things where you fix this. I just want the community to know that then you're gonna have to do this and you're gonna, and and most people in this room know that. The building's all that it needs to work, but you're gonna choose.
And that, to your point, thank you, is the the building enclosure sucks at a high level, for lack of a better word. You know, there's single pane glass, some original to the campus. There's plywood in some openings, so it doesn't, it's not properly insulated, it's not properly air sealed and none, and this scope does not contemplate any of those costs.
I think we all had our wish, we'd want to bring a building because it's lived, it's outlived its life, but you know, as I've said before, there's no funding mechanism for that in the state of Vermont for school building assistance, so you know, the locale would be responsible for dollar one. A new high school would be well over a hundred million, probably approaching two hundred million dollars. So that's not really in the cats. So what I really want to make sure doesn't happen is that we, we're turning back some of the five point three million that we have because you know, we couldn't decide where we wanted to spend it. We know it's not going to do everything, but I think we need to prioritize and get it out to bids as soon as possible because we're, we're losing construction window.
Yeah, yes, and among the other pieces, as I'm sure you all know, is that contractors are all wildly busy. Material lead times right now are insane. So we've put the the middle school out to bid twice and we've gotten crickets. It has, we have gotten no prequalifications, no bids, no nothing. So it's, it's a challenge out there.
So are you asking for us to give you a direction to go in and then would you come back with the bids the next?
I mean, I, I, I would think you would, you should take input from the board where they think they're and then come back to June and say, this is where we're going to spend the five point three million.
Yeah, I think if if the board is okay with me communicating with.
Yeah, absolutely. You can communicate with us, yes. And and.
And coming up to this.
And everyone else there about where the, you know, what what the priority should be and and I think what I'm hearing is.
He does.
He's motioned.
It's student.
There's no action.
There's no action, but you know, she's seeking input, student comfort, priority. Get student comfort or fix something that could be done, finished. You know, if it's one of the, if it's one of the other buildings, the side buildings, then and that money finishes it, that would be compelling.
Or anything that also would decrease additional cost and spending, like, so if there's anything that's going to reduce the oil or mold or insulation, those kinds of things.
Or in touch. In touch. Or not. Yeah, no. Mold is a problem, but it's an, I'm allergic to it. I go into a place and the mold issue is a problem, so it gets like that.
Some of the board members we had to pay to on the bottom floor of the eighty-six building, all the ceilings had to come down. They'd have a remediation company come in.
Yeah, so anything where we're not having to pay for things like that, if we can invest in now to.
Which would come back with those poor mold dehumanifiers there. If they're not kept running and empty, we would have that problem. So and that, and when we depend on non-mechanical systems, especially we need the human factor to keep those empty. Failure is a possibility.
So are we saying there are other comments or do you have enough, feel like you have enough direction to go?
So I want you to be before you go.
Yeah, so what's your boiler control?
I don't know.
Nothing makes me happy better than.
Why don't we ask for a motion or to accept it and then second, and then you can discuss it.
Oh, okay, yes, okay. So we're moving on to the biomass controls, which we moved up under this superintendent's report. I'm looking for a motion for to accept recommendations as shown in the board packet. Can I have a second? Any discussion? So why don't we have Polly?
Yeah, sorry. So again, when these biomass facilities were built, they put in the boilers and the the physical plant and then they also did the software, right, to control everything that comes up on a screen on a computer so you can look at how it's operating. As Mr. Payne will tell you, the a couple of things. One, the wood chip boiler itself is oversized for the spaces. Um, so it'll blast heat in the high school because it runs uncontrolled. There's no way to ramp it up and down. So it's either on or it's off. So the wood chip boiler controls will enable us to be able to ramp it up and down based on outside air temperature, right? So we're, we're being more efficient with our resources. We're making occupant comfort a priority and we're using we're able to run the biomass longer during the year. We don't usually start it till October and we, we just turned it off in April. Because if we run it on days that are kind of warm, it's like a sauna in the building. So the reason we want to expand the, the season of the biomass is because it, it's wildly cheaper to heat per MMBtu with biomass rather than oil. Oil is about seventy dollars in MMBtu and wood chips is about seven. So the cost savings is significant.
Questions?
So the, the, so the wood chip boilers were in the school budget, which you guys have approved. Was like thirty-six or thirty-seven dollar, thirty-six or thirty-seven thousand dollars for each campus. Efficiency Vermont is kicking in an incentive of ten thousand dollars for each one of those projects. And then we applied for a grant from the state to pay for half of each. And they, we got the grant, so the what the, the, the thing I, the widget I need from the board is to vote to proceed and let me execute the grant so that we can pay it down because it's not going to cost, it'll pay for itself in a year.
Make a motion. We have a motion in the second already. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Or the motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, also under the superintendent's report, I don't know, the newer board members all know Jonathan Phipps. He is the SVSU Equity Coordinator and he's here to talk, he's been working relentlessly and many hours on our Juneteenth celebration in our district and John, it's time for your infomercials.
Okay, so I'm here, as Jim alluded, it is an infomercial, more so advertisement, more so a formal announcement. Because on June seventeenth, exactly one month from today, from noon to three P M, right outside that window and possibly in that room over there, we will be having our annual Juneteenth celebration slash commemoration. This was an initiative we first did last year. The goal last year was to have a hundred of Republican attendance. We did that for middle school. We either met or slightly exceeded that goal. Some details about it, like I said, June seventeenth, noon to three, it will be located at, at the formal, the formal name of the place is the Tuttle Lot, which is located at one one three Depot Street, which is right there. Our target, target audience for this year is actually going to be significantly larger. I am shooting for a minimum of two hundred people in attendance from the community. That is also why we're having it in a downtown and centralized location as opposed to middle school. This entire effort is going to be paid for by grants that we, we, that were awarded to us. It's actually going to be very, very fun. We are going to have, it's free of charge to all that attend, open to all that attend, appropriate for all ages and families. And it will also involve free food, free meals, free dessert as well. But we're, I'm currently working on getting the final bits of entertainment. We already have a DJ lined up. We have some, I mean, I don't know, I guess we can sell entertainment options lined up. I don't want to spoil the surprises, but they are there. And we're going to have something really special, hopefully lined up once, well, hopefully when it comes in. So with that, I'm just here to announce it to the board. I'm going to be announcing it hopefully to everybody who get tired of hearing me if you watched of cat TV or whatever. And just please, if you can, be there June seventeenth and spread the word. The more the merrier and this is a great effort to try and have community engagement as well as push forward equity initiatives and diversity diversity and inclusion initiatives as well. So with that, it's my time.
Jonathan, this is rain or shine.
Oh, yes, sorry. I have to make the formal announcement. It will be rain or shine. Last year when we had it, it was very, very cold, but we still had to. For those who were there, it was the one day in June that for some reason was under forty degrees. I've never experienced that in my life.
Well, the middle school is like a wind tunnel up there. It started raining, it was cold.
It's also another reason why I'm like, yeah, maybe a more non-hogel location would be better. But it will be rain or shine. No offense, Chris, another school, just saying your school is on the side of the hill.
I'm looking down two seventy-nine there, the wind, yeah.
Now.
It's getting bad.
Yeah, and also, chose the bones.
Yeah, no. Jonathan, if I may, I could take off this hat and put on my other hat. I am also the president of the BBC, which is the downtown Bennington organization. So I would encourage you to reach out to our executive director of upper of events. Jenny Dewar and let her promote this for you as well.
You've sent me an email with the name and title. I will gladly do that because that would make it, that would make, no, they helped me out a lot because I won't remember that one on, on my drive home, so.
Jonathan will.
I'll send you an email.
He's been promoting, he's been promoting this everywhere he can and I hope that that you're actually underestimating your optimism for how well this event will be.
If we hit over two fifty, then you'll get to see me do it back then. Not successfully, but.
I think we got that on video.
Say, oh, sad.
Just let me know when you want me to write the article too.
Oh, perfect, yes. And yes, Tori wrote the article for our last, if you check on the Bennington banner, you'll see under Tori's, I guess, accreditation, you'll see the article from last year was a smashing success, so.
I'll give you a preview this time too, instead of, instead of the day of.
Are you good? I'm good. Here's how it's.
Also, if you're a branch, your advertisements will start on Saturday.
Oh, perfect. Thank you. So.
Different house.
Advertise it, promote it. Please, please promote it and that's all you have to do.
Could you back up a little bit? Just, we shouldn't make assumptions. Explain Juneteenth.
Good, thank you. So, all right, so Juneteenth is our nation's newest federal holiday. It is a holiday that basically describes when the last when the last enslaved persons in Texas were formally free from the yoke of slave of chattel slavery in our country. It um, reason why it's it's been a holiday in my community for as far back as I can remember, which is wild. Uh, but it became a federal holiday, I believe it was two thousand twenty one? Yes, two thousand twenty one or two thousand twenty, one of the two, um. It's very important holiday, I think it's a holiday that is long overdue, it's often it's often described as America's second Independence Day. Um, something that I think is, the more and more it's injected into the public consciousness, the more and more ground we can make up in trying to, I guess you could say build relations and restore community trust and actually get to a better spot as a country and as people and as society than where we are currently. So that's what the holiday is in celebration of, I think it's a great opportunity for our community and our schools to get together. That's the other part about this, this or this event is also partnered with a not a a number of local large organizations, last year we partnered with S V E M C H C, the town. I think U C S, number of other organizations also partner with us with this, they we they help us set up, they have their own little tables where they can basically show their initiative and equity and inclusion efforts, and then like um and then we do the exact same thing, and it's it's a good community or organization, it's a good community effort. We're all, we all get to be in the same spot for one day in summer, hopefully warm summer, uh and like it's just what I've been working on, we're not, I see for about five, six weeks now, so yes, please promote it, don't make my five, six weeks.
Jonathan, the the actual holiday is Monday, but we're.
Yes, federal holiday is actually on June, June eighteenth, Monday, or yeah, June nineteenth, excuse me, holy hell, June nineteenth, Monday, whoa, hell, these are my marbles, sorry, it's the other day. Actual holiday is Monday, it's federally rec- uh recognized, we have off, so don't ask me to do anything that day, um, but we're doing it on Saturday, June seventeenth, primarily because it is a federal holiday and also because oh, it's easier to do, I think also Father's Day falls on that weekend if I'm not mistaken. So that took the Sunday out of it, um, so the seventeenth Saturday, that's the day.
And it takes us out of competition with some other events that are going actually on the holiday, so the.
That's true, people will be able to participate, they'll be able to come by, so.
Well, thank you, Jonathan, uh, any question, oh, sorry, this is a role, but I just wanna thank publicly for uh in his pursuit for this, it's a lot of work and he's got a lot of partners on it, so.
Yeah, fine, fine.
Hey, Tom, can I say something?
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Do you have any other?
No, I don't, other than our second session.
Okay, um, so we're gonna move on to finance uh with the treasurer's report, I didn't, I checked before I um got here, I didn't see it, so I want to, we have an action item for this, and that's. Okay, um, so we're gonna move on to the consent agenda, we have minutes, warrants, retirements, leave of absence, resignations and nominations. And it, um, would you like to move as group this together as one item, one action, one vote, or should I do a lineup? Yeah, there's times, great, um, uh, like a motion to accept items one through six um on the consent agenda.
Some.
Second?
Second.
Um, discussion. So uh for discussion, I just wanna make a point that um I, when I was reviewing their resignations uh under five C, Tina Patterson is actually not a employee of M A U, so we're not, we can be excluding her from their acceptance of the resignation.
S V S U employee, but.
So that, okay, so, um, if there's no other discussion, uh, I, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Um, opposed? Tori, you, you're good.
I I'm a person, sorry.
Um, motion here is, uh, the, we're gonna move on to policies. Um, in the packet, we have uh, why don't we do these one by one, I have um for A, I have twenty two hundred nondiscrimination, um, and the motion I'd like is to adopt the policy as um, as presented. Any discussion? Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Um. Opposed? You're good, Tori? But moving on, we're um to adopt um policy number five zero eight set seven threats and disruptions to school operations. I have a motion to accept, who does present it? Twenty second, um, all in favor?
Aye.
And um final policy this evening is five four zero five behavioral intervention, um, can I have a motion to adopt it as presented? So, you have a motion, Leon, or are you second?
Yeah, several dramatic comments should be made in intersections in terms of names, I sent it to Lisa uh from the uh board, they picked up on it, it's a director of student support services versus special bid director to be changed, and that won't affect the outcome of the policy.
Of the policy.
So it's just that we needed to note it as a change of names and so forth.
Okay, and have you have you communicated with them so that?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Um, so uh we have a motion to accept the policy with the language changes as provided by me on um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Um, we are moving on to the administrator's report.
Uh, first minute introduce the student representative, is that what you're doing with us? So uh we will be, uh, we have a student representative from Mount Anthony, I'll let the student introduce themselves. Uh, and she and a partner have volunteered to serve as student representatives for next June school year as well.
Hi, my name's Fonda Nudo, I'm a junior at M A U. H S and I felt like I'd be a representative from this camp. I feel confident.
She stopped me out, she was, she was not fallen told, she stopped me out of this opportunity, so, and may have a partner helping out, right, so there may be exchanging between two of us.
If you should, if I may ask, how did you, how did you know about the opening to speak out from Mr. Payne?
Um, I'm a former teacher from the school, she had mentioned the opportunity and uh daughter had, was also volunteering, had mentioned to me saying that I would be a good fit and I thought I'd take the opportunity.
Great. No, it's welcome, thank you.
That's great, thank you.
Happy, yeah, all right, uh, I'm gonna uh. Kind of, I asked because we had gone a long time without the student representative, but like but if you move, you know, after you do your year, move on, how do we get the message out that we always want a student representative, so? Any suggestions you have on that going forward, if you would welcome?
I'm sorry, should you repeat your last name for me?
Romino?
Grandmother's name Carolyn?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, she knows a lot of people.
Now, back in New Jersey days.
Oh, okay.
All right, um, a couple of things uh of note at the high school and then a couple of calendars. Uh, state standardized testing, the new and improved Vermont uh C A P. Uh, this is a state mandated testing uh that we do each spring. Uh, had a quick rollout this year, but I feel like we were successful in completing the first week of testing, that was last week. Ninth graders take a test in math and E L A, eleventh graders take a test in science. We used a modified schedule, so if we had high uh high school students, new year is a two hour delay. That actually allowed us to uh not interrupt the programming at the tech center, so that's something we're thinking about as we go forward. Uh, the s- the state would like to see us have ninety five percent participation. Uh, so we will be continuing to chase down students who did not complete their tests last week to meet that goal. Uh, I wanna thank specifically two teachers, uh Sarah Mnugent and Adam Carmichael. They are full-time teachers for us, they are participating in the district sponsored cohort leadership group, which is moving them toward an administrative licensure. Sarah is expecting her first in June, uh, and in addition to that, they took on the opportunity to organize statewide testing. They did an outstanding job with the support of an administrator, Kelsey, myself, so I wanna publicly thank them for the hours and hours of organizing and then problem solving while last week they did a great job. Uh, I wanna uh highlight something that was Ferguson and I noted yesterday, we're having an extremely successful spring sports season at the M A U. Uh, women's lacrosse, boys lacrosse, baseball, softball, all of them have a record somewhere around of the area of nine and three. Uh, they're top rated in their seating categories, it should be a lot of fun to watch them go forward. Uh, I know the ladies played B B A today.
Yeah.
Hmm, yeah, hopefully, hopefully.
It's one to eight, but it was better than the last game, I see.
Yeah, that's right, that's what we're looking for too, we, the the boys will be traveling north on Friday to play them under the lights in Applejack, we're hoping for a closer game as well. Uh, I've had the opportunity to attend tennis matches, track and field in recent weeks. All of those teams will be sending representatives to state meets and tournaments that are coming up, which will be pretty close. Uh, most of the league championships are gonna be just decided either this week or next. Uh, I also wanna congratulate the unified basketball team, they qualified in their first season for the playoffs, they lost in B B A. We'll try to fix that next year, uh, we're already looking forward to them, if you didn't get a chance to come out and see them this season, you gotta come out and watch them next year. If you wanna think all the good things that high school sports does, unified basketball is where it's at, so um a great team, we're gonna graduate quite a few seniors, but we're looking forward already to next season. Um, wanna thank the students in the music department, uh, they put on an evening of performances Friday, May fifth. Uh, as always, they are supported by Ms. Sweet, but there was student directed, student rehearsed, student performed. Uh, they did short speeches, short scenes from plays, they did songs, dance numbers, it was a lot of fun. Uh, and they're not done yet, there's uh more things coming, but again, a really nice uh performance from the music department kids. Uh, I wanna thank the student council, their advisors, their advisors are Ms. uh Finnegan, Ms. Burke and Ms. Brigham. We hosted a bonfire last Friday, uh, had a nice turnout, we served food, we served beverages, we played some music, we had a good time. This is a continuation of the uh fall, winter, they had a bonfire, this is out in the back of the field. Um, we did not start the brush fire that everybody heard about a couple of days ago, I just wanna make sure of that. Uh, a couple of events as board members, uh, board members have in the past and we encourage you in the future to attend any and all of these things that you might want to attend. Uh, please don't feel like you gotta spend every night with us, cause it's a lot. Uh, this Saturday, there will be a senior night sponsored by senior families from five to nine at the high school, this is for seniors and their guests. Uh, it's a, it's a meal, it's games, uh, and there'll be a hypnotist. Uh, the following week is a half day, Wednesday, the twenty fourth is a half day for us, students will be released early. I always put those in case moms and dads are like, are you really getting out at eleven, yes, they are. Uh, the twenty fifth of this month is an evening of the arts, that's at seven P M in the auditorium, that is both visual art display of work from the year and also a performance in the auditorium, it's a lot of fun. As always, the public is invited and board members are invited. Uh, the thirty first, underclassmen awards, it's grades nine through eleven, six P M in the auditorium. Board members have traditionally had representative present for that, uh, it's a really good opportunity to thank both the families and the community for all the uh hard work the kids have accomplished. Saturday, the third is prom from seven to eleven, you are not required to go to that. I encourage you to find something else to do, but just know that that happens, uh, that is out on the west end of town at uh Colgate Park, it's a very nice evening. Uh, we encourage families to take pictures, have picnics at their homes, as there is not a traditional march at that facility. And there's, the parking is somewhat limited, so we don't encourage everybody to pile out on the west end and watch kids uh come on in. Uh, the seventh of June, which is not far away, is senior awards, six P M, again, uh, we've had board members in the past attend that, feel free to do that. Feb- or uh, June the ninth is graduation, that is a Friday afternoon, that will be held on Spinelli Field, that is a ticketed event. That is not open to the public unless you have a ticket, um, and that um board members are invited, if you're a board member and you would like to sit on the stage with Mr. Carl Keane and administration or have a preferred seating, you just call us at the high school, ask Ms. Gaver, she'll put you on a list and we'll make sure that gets taken care of. If it, um, sorry?
What time?
Six o'clock, if it rains, we are going to go inside, which is gonna frustrate a lot of family members. Uh, so everybody wanna do their non-rain dance, that'd be awesome. Uh, because what will happen is families are given six tickets to attend outside, and we have a limited number of tickets for additional. If we go inside, everybody's limited to four guests, so.
Yes, are you gonna do it on the baseball field again?
We're gonna be on Spinelli, but we may move back on the football field.
I like that.
I know, we got some very positive feedback, but uh the grounds crew and tech folks have asked for Spinelli, I think it's there's a couple of technical reasons, but it was a nice little.
It was.
Was, uh, last day of school for kids at the high school is Friday, the sixteenth, it is a half day at the high school. Um, we do final exams the last two days, so. And that's it.
Did I also read somewhere to that um Lynn Sweet is up for some kind of national?
Oh, yes, boy, I forgot that, she is up for, and I forgot the title off the top of my head.
I can't remember.
She is a finalist uh in a nationally recognized, for a nationally recognized award for music educators. Uh, she's pretty excited about being nominated, if she wins, we'll have to tether her to the ground to be a little happier. But she uh, yes, Lynn is up for that, she's a a very, very much valued educator um in the building, and for anybody who has, of course, attended numerous concerts and plays, she does a fantastic job, so. Uh, a a great recognition for her.
A kudos to Lynn.
Absolutely, thank you for reminding me of that as I dropped that.
A new scholarship. I mean, I wouldn't let one of my articles go unmentioned, so.
Shameless plug. Yes.
Second one. I get one tonight.
Yeah, the um, Tori, help me for a minute, the the full name of that?
Casey Fraser Memorial Scholarship Fund.
Yes, so that will be a new, thanks to the generosity of the community, there will be a five hundred dollar uh scholarship awarded uh at senior night uh for a female student participating in athletics, pursuing higher education. That is made possible by family, that is a brand new scholarship, uh, the application is not even printed and available, but that will be awarded this year.
Yeah, she she mentioned you specifically for being very helpful in the process, so.
Well, very generous, and thank you for putting that in the paper.
Yeah, do you have a question, sir?
Uh, just another comment, you had a well-represented student from the state football group that got inducted into the Vermont Football Hall of Fame. And the head coach was there and that guy stood out, worded it, I mean, he really made this town shine for the write-up on him at the National Football Hall of Fame.
Yeah, Josh Worthington, again featured in the paper, so we appreciated he and his coach, again, I bet you he's a senior graduating this year. Uh, he is a uh three-sport athlete, an outstanding citizen in the building, a uh a player, he participates in unified basketball. Uh, and he, uh, if you attended the Rutland game, the championship game, you know he gave an impassioned speech at halftime, which Coach Gordon has said absolutely helped ignite them for the second half, so he's an outstanding citizen and he was recognized in the paper, thank you for that.
Yeah.
I could've done two pages, I apologize.
Have you been on your longest one?
I know, usually. Good pressure on.
It's good, you know, it's a tough one to follow. Um, my report is uh, is a lot of, you know, important dates coming up and such, um, so I'll get started with that. So uh as Tim said, we've also concluded the Vermont State Assessment, the V T C A P. Um, you know, we we uh, everybody in our building tests math and uh E L A, so uh, you know, sixth, seventh and eighth grade. Science is just for eighth graders, so we've concluded that, um, as Mr. Payne uh said in his building, Mr. Nicholas uh is busily uh trying to make sure we're we're getting any retakes or, or not retakes, sorry, uh, you know, makeup testing done. Uh, and I do wanna thank him, uh, he's a school counselor in the building, he uh, you know, you know, continues to do his great work in supporting students, but he has uh done an amazing job for a number of years now being my testing coordinator. And uh I can't really imagine not having him in that role, um, so he he's kept his other responsibilities going and he has uh, you know, has helped us pretty much have, you know, run run the new state assessment, you know, system without any any hiccup circling, so I I really wanna thank Mr. Nicholas, Mr. Nicholas for that. Um, on June first, um, there's a a group in the middle school called the Youth Leadership Group, they're presenting uh at the middle school from five thirty to six thirty. On some work that they've been doing around vaping prevention. Um, I attended their presentation last spring, uh, it was excellent, uh, it was around more focused on on mental health, um, this is a. Um, this is a group that, uh, looks at some survey data with the Alliance from Community Transformation and my prevention coordinator. And then they put together some, you know, prevention campaign on a, on a topic. And so they focused on vaping, which we, we all know is a, um, you know, a, a relevant topic, uh, for, for kids in our community right now. And I encourage anyone to attend, uh, if you, if you're available that night, five thirty to six thirty, June first. Um, June second, we have a very exciting day at the middle school. It's called our Patriot Celebration Day or Patriot Challenge Day. Um, and it's a, it's a, I guess I would describe it as a massive field day type event. Um, it's centered around community building and teen camaraderie, um, two, you know, staples of the middle school. Um, again, love to have visitors that day. It's a, it's a trip to watch. Um, it's, there's an amazing race theme for the day, so we have different advisories competing with different challenges uh, together as an advisory group, and that's a new twist on the day, the amazing race theme. Um, there's a committee that works on this in the school and they have been planning for months. And, uh, it's just a very fun day overall for, for students at the middle school. I'm sure Mr. Payne has some fond memories of Patriot Celebration Day. If you don't know Mr. Payne, you know, he likes the MC stuff, like you've seen him at the, um, at the Nordic ski races, for example, how he's, you know, the MC. So he, I, I may have to invite him back up to do a little MC-ing of, of Patriot Celebration Day, 'cause I think he misses that a little bit.
We'll start next.
Uh, but June second, full day. Um, and then I have, uh, June fifteenth. It's a Thursday where we have our awards assemblies, uh, that morning. I believe we're going with eight, nine, and ten o'clock, but I'll have to, I'll have to communicate those, those exact times. Might be fifteen minutes different there. Um, and so that's a sixth and a seventh and an eighth grade award ceremony the morning of June fifteenth. And then we have our eighth grade celebration, uh, happening at six PM on that evening, June fifteenth. Um, as Mr. Payne said for the high school, if, uh, you know, I'd love to have board members, uh, present. Um, and if you would like to be present, if you reach out to the middle school and just touch base with Sarah Hollister. Um, she's my admin assistant and she can make sure, same thing, that we have a, a nice cozy spot for you. Hope to be outside. We had, um, inside celebration last year, so my, you know, my rookie, my rookie year at the celebration, we had the event to go inside. It's actually an amazing night and we did consider holding it inside, um, but we are gonna go for outside with the backup plan of inside again. And that, um, that decision is not made until noon that day. June sixteenth is a half day for students, except for that one. And then on June twenty-first, uh, we have a longstanding tradition at the middle school. It's been going on since before my sixteen years there. Um, and so it is a, uh, it's a staff luncheon. It's like a potluck luncheon barbecue. Um, we acknowledge retirements, years of service. We have some laughs. We hang out together. Uh, that starts at noon on June twenty-first, and again, it's an open invite for, uh, anyone here that would like to come in, hang out with middle school uh, staff. It's for, you know, for adults. It's the, uh, you know, students will not be there at that time. Um, but it's a, it's a really good time. We have a lot of fun that day. And that is the last day for, uh, for staff, so there's a lot of smiling faces in the building.
It's the best lunch ever.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Uh, there's some, uh, you know, there's some, some, we'll, um, definitely have to make sure Roxy comes back, uh, you know, right now.
Yeah.
Okay, she makes a heck of a, a lot, a lot of things, but a heck of a, of meatball, a meatball, so. Alright, and, uh, last little update about hiring. Um, I have a long list of, of positions that, you know, we're working to fill. I've, um, I hesitate to say successfully, 'cause it, it still hasn't been approved by the board, but I have uh, a math, uh, a sixth grade math candidate, a seventh grade math candidate, and a land steward. Uh, you know, nomination forms have been sent over. Uh, they were at the end of last week, so they did not quite make it onto the consent agenda, um, for tonight. Um, but, you know, I'm working with those three candidates and very optimistic that, you know, when through the everything references, nonforms are over here to the offices, so. Um, looking to, you know, start working with them and getting them outboarded. And then I have, uh, still have my hazing harassment and bullying, a coordinator position, which I've connected with HR and working on. Uh, uh, finishing up job, this job description for posting. I have two security officers. You guys know this. These guys helped me, uh, get the positions in the budget. I appreciate that. Two security officers, uh, that, uh, Mr. Tony Lee, Associate Principal, is working through a hiring process for. I would have to say we had a number of candidates for those positions. I think we had need candidates for that. Um, I have a science, uh, teacher opening that, um, that we're working through, uh, interviews right now. I have a literacy coach, uh, opening that, uh, we're working through interviews right now. And then I also have a health, uh, teacher opening that we were covering with a long-term sub this year. And, uh, we did a great job, but we're hoping to hire a full-time, uh, you know, permanent teacher, and we're working through interviews on that position right now. Um, we also, uh, are going to need a, uh, we have, uh, someone taking a leave next year for a special education position. And so, uh, we're gonna be posting that soon as well. So a number of, uh, you know, positions at the middle school and if, uh, you know, just more, uh, in the community, if you can, you know, correct people to check us out and that's something good work that's happening at the middle school. We'd really like to talk to some quality candidates. That's all I got.
I'd just like to, to commend the middle school on the career day, um, event that was at the middle school. I thought the kids were incredibly polite and it was just a lot of fun to attend, uh, to attend. Thank you for that. It was very well organized.
It, uh, Hannah Green needs a lot of credit for that. Uh, Hannah Green is, is always the, uh, that's, that's her, her event. She, she really takes that on. There's other people that help out, but that's Hannah's green, Hannah Green's organization. And I agree, the, uh, I was very, very proud of the student body that day. And I, a lot of that, I, I trucked up to Hannah and the crew working on it, because they've, they've, you know, it's not just go into the fair and check stuff out. There's some very specific, uh, question prompts and things to, yeah, Scott was there, uh, giving out stickers, popular booth, Orba sticker. I was, I was over there, you know, I, I was there getting.
I've been anywhere found around the building.
I have one.
Oh, I've got her. That was the amazing thing. If there was a piece of paper or something, it'd be all over, but Orba stickers, no, those, those made at home. If I wander around the building, and I do appreciate the hat.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Um, so this would be the time to give our first, I, so I, forgive me, this is the first time I've ever been in a board meeting with a student representative. So do you, are we gonna have, normally have her give a report or have them give a report for the same one, if they'd like? Would you like to give a report right now, or do you think the introduction for?
I think I'll say it's the introduction.
Okay, but so if going forward, this will be the forum to have some time, you know, to talk to, to assassinate her. Okay. Perfect. Um, we're gonna move on to the next agenda item, uh, which is committee reports. Um, I don't believe we have any committee meetings, because we haven't issued any committees yet.
Well, we did at the finale, so.
Do you wanna give a brief?
I'm just give a b- brief outline. We kind of reset. The, the, we've reset. Um, we're going to, thanks to the board approval, we are going to begin some fundraising. We're gonna be starting at Mayfest. I'm gonna be selling, but Dave might come and pop in and help, um, bricks and bricks to lay down for the eventual um, complex. So I don't wanna call it for Spinelli, but it'll be for that complex. So that's gonna start. It'll be an ongoing fundraiser. We're gonna continue crossing our Ts and dotting our Is and making up some handouts for the community. We're gonna be planning some community, um, forums where we will have, uh, people from the hospital, people from turf, the turf companies, come and speak to community members. Because we do believe we are gonna have to take this back for a bond. Don't, I will come back to the board with action once we've, for, and requested action next month, might, maybe. We're still, we're still working through it.
Oh, were you done?
Uh, um, so we're still working through the details, but, um, that's pretty much all we talked about. Um, we did have, I, I have to say, it was really kinda nice. We had a, a couple of, uh, ex, uh, Mount Anthony football players show up to Spinelli. And they're now, I think Leon, one was your grandson, right? And another, I can't remember their names.
Andrew.
Yeah, they were, it was so nice to have their input.
Yeah.
Um, and now, because now they're playing college ball, so they certainly know the, on turf, so they certainly know the difference. And the one other thing that I want to mention is, not sure if many of you heard, that there is, um, a bill in the legislature about banning turf fields um, with PFOAs, uh, turf fields, I mean, the PFOAs. So, um, that kinda is kinda good for us now, because now we don't have to prove that there are no PFOA, PFOAs. The turf company has to certify that. So, that takes one of our big things off our list. Um, and also, one last thing, Chad Gordon put together a beautiful, um, PowerPoint on the community survey that he put out, which I'll hopefully be able to have. I'm just working on power, uh, to get power to where I'll be sitting at Mayfest to have it looping, so. But the, um, overall, um, feeling from the community, from all the results, is that we definitely need to do something for the whole complex. You know, it was really all, I mean, it really was all very positive, so. Um, that's about it.
No, that was my question. It was about, uh, 'cause I, I think it passed the Senate. I don't know if it.
Yeah, I think it passed the Senate, but. I mean, I think at this point, it's only gonna help us. So, that's my report.
Um, so we'll move on to the chair's report. I'm gonna do this really quickly, because we have a couple of executive sessions this evening. Um, one of the things I wanted to mention is, uh, I would like to start having committee reports in, in every meeting where the committee, um, members come and give a brief update. And I think we were, I was just talking with Susan about maybe integrating the, um, the committee notes into something that we review as part of our packet, um, on a, uh, monthly basis. Because I'd like to make this like an easier space for the public to access some of the brief summaries as well as, um, uh, in order to make sure that all of the board members are, have informed, uh, decisions or, or in, conform, make informed decisions without coming, um, without having to go to every committee. Um, while we, I've worked with Susan, we've come up with, uh, committee assignments. Um, I, I'm just gonna go over them briefly and then we're gonna move on. Um, for the Agonson service, we're gonna have Wendy Marie and Glenn Thurber. For education, well, Dave Frederickson, Tori Rich, Wendy Marie, and Jayla Sikora. For finance, um, Leon Johnson, Scott McNeely, and myself. Um, and for, uh, the teacher negotiations, I'd like to leave that to be determined. Um, and for ESP, we're gonna leave Dave, uh, because I think you're just finishing up for right now. Um, for policy, uh, I'm with, Leon, Tori, and Katie, um, would do the policy. And then I'm going to leave Spinelli Field alone, because they're in motion and I don't think that we should. Um, and if anyone has any thoughts or comments, um, do, you know, reach out to me, but I'm gonna have these posted on the website. Um, and I believe that's it for my chair report.
Did you say education? I'm sorry.
Yes.
You're on.
Sorry, I drew a line. I'm sorry.
You're doing it so quick.
I'm, oh, I'm sorry. I, I was trying to.
I think she said that.
Um, for education is Dave, Tori, Wendy, and Jayla, and with Jayla as chair. Um, so hopefully you guys can keep going and make decisions.
We may be, by next month, you to give us somebody for negotiations for teachers that may begin early.
Okay.
That's as soon as you might.
Um, yeah, I'll just put it out there. Yes, I've had a couple other board members also, so we can talk about it, yeah, yeah.
Our, our discussions with the association is, uh, we would like to be done, a, a little bit different, we would like to be done negotiations prior to the setting of the budget. Makes sense for a lot of reasons, so, uh, we may be sooner than we initially anticipated.
Okay, did I speed read all too much? Does anyone want to say it again? I'm sorry. Okay, we're gonna move on. Um, so under FYI, we have a budget status report. Um, the SDSU student enrollment and, uh, the list of spring coaches. Um, is there any discussion on any of those items? Jim, did you wanna give any summary on the student enrollment, or is it? Okay. Does anyone have any discussion on? Okay, we are gonna move into, um, I'd like a motion to move into executive session, um, for, uh, VSA three-one-three-seven, the academic records or suspension of or discipline of students, um, and invite Superintendent Carl Keen.
And, uh, Nico.
And Nico. This is, I'm doing this, I, when I modified it, I started with what we've had, and then this is the next one.
Are you staying?
Did I, is, is Ms. Payne staying? Did I add, so this, oh, we do not leave this one?
No, it's not that one. Just this one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so we are.
This, I'm aware of. That's the one that was originally.
This is what was originally, um, I wasn't sure if it was in. I wasn't sure if it was.
Why, why, because it's on there, why don't we go ahead and announce it? Last quote, principal's a state per minute. We'll have a discussion and then we'll.
Okay, do you mean Nick Gole from this one as well?
Uh, no, so.
Okay. So to clarify, um, man, do you have something?
That's, you, uh, you mean the state, whether some kind of stuff happened.
Yeah.
Other than.
Whether there'll be an action item. I think there's no action item associated with this. So to clarify, I'd like a motion to move into executive session for the academic records or suspension of discipline. Keeping, um, Superintendent Carl Keen and Principal Payne and, um, what can I have a motion?
And that's.
As principal wire, sorry. So, so which, are you all in favor? Fire now at executive session. Um, so the next item on the agenda is to go into back into executive session, though. Right, that's what I'm starting to look at. To go into executive session. Under VSA three-one-three, free the appointment or employment and evaluation of a public officer or employee provided as a public body should make a final decision, hire or appoint a public officer or employee in an open meeting and shall explain the reasons for a final decision during the open meeting. Um, we will be inviting, um, Nick Gole and Superintendent Carl Keen. Um, and we will not have an action item coming out of this. Um, and I have a motion to go into executive session.
Thank you.
All in favor? Thank you.